Let's call the Committee on Fiscal Affairs to order. As you know, there's an executive committee meeting at 6:00 tonight, so we're going to go through these issues and deliberate them appropriately, but be done by 6:00. First item of business is approval of the minutes from our prior meeting on February 2nd, 2015. It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next five resolutions are all items for the Borough Manhattan Community College. These resolutions are facilities investments at BMCC. I'm going to read them all, aggregate them together, and then we can vote as -- ask questions, and then we can vote as one. Calendar item 1B is for BMCC chiller and fan coil purchase. It's a resolution requesting that trustees of the university authorize BMCC to issue purchase orders to train U.S. Inc. for the main building chiller and fan coil units at the 199 Chambers Street location. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $2,630,000. This purchase will result in an annual energy cost savings of over $308,000 annually arising from electricity and steam conservation. Calendar item 1C is for an HVAC upgrade. It's a resolution requesting that the trustees of the university authorize BMCC to issue purchase orders to Honeywell Building Solutions for an HVAC system to upgrade the 199 Chambers Street facility. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $966,750. And it will have an annual cost savings of $606,982 arising from energy conservation. Calendar item 1D is for LED lighting at the 199 Chambers Street location, pushing forward a resolution, moving forward a resolution, excuse me, requesting that the trustees of the university authorize BMCC to issue a purchase order to Graybar Electric Company, Inc. for the purchase of LED lights, lighting controls, sensors, and ballasts. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $780,000. The annual estimated savings from this investment is expected to be $128,300. Calendar item 1E, also for BMCC, is for LED lighting at the Murray Street campus. It's a resolution requesting that the trustees of the university authorize BMCC to issue purchase orders to Fastenal Company for the purchase of LED lighting fixtures, motion sensors, controls, and energy management. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $90900. The integration of the LED fixtures with the building management system will allow the college to improve its control of its electric consumption, resulting in an estimated savings of $117,209 per year. And finally, calendar item 1F is a BMCC LED instructional television studio equipment upgrade and rehabilitation for the 199 Chambers Street campus. This resolution requests that the trustees authorize, or the university authorize, the Borough Manhattan Community College to issue purchase orders for the purchase and installation of studio equipment against the New York State Office of General Services contracts pursuant to law and university regulations. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1,500,000. BMCC will replace obsolete end-of-life production equipment in its main instructional television studio with professional-grade equipment found in today's TV and multimedia studios to better prepare students in the video arts and technology program and the media arts department to enter the broadcasting film and television market. I move the adoption of calendar item 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, and 1F. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Any one want to? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I now call on Vice Chancellor Sapienza to give us a review of the state budget which passed last week.
Thanks, Chair Lloyd. Appreciate it. As the Chair said, the budget was enacted last week, the state budget for fiscal year 16. We sent an analysis out to all of the trustees last week, so I'm sure you've all had a chance to read it. I'll briefly go through some of the highlights that were contained in the budget. We do have an analysis that is at all of your seats that I'll go through, and we'll saw the senior colleges. On the senior colleges, the $12 million that was proposed by the governor in the executive budget for performance improvement plans remained in the final adopted budget condition. So that is new money for our senior colleges to help them implement their performance improvement plans, which will be due in the fall. Some of the language that the governor had proposed in his executive budget regarding performance improvement plans, there was a proposal to hold back 10% of CUNY's overall appropriation until the plans were approved, and until they were approved by the state budget director. Those two criteria were taken out. The holdback of funds and the approval of the state budget director were not included in the final state budget. But the $12 million remains, and the requirement for the colleges to submit their performance improvement plans are in the final budget condition. Some of the items that we were seeking restoration for were fully restored. The SEEK program, the Joseph Murphy Institute, those were all fully restored, and they received some additional funds. SEEK is going up by almost $4 million next year. The Murphy Institute received another $500,000 above this year's level. We received $500,000 for the CUNY Leeds program as well, a terrific program for our students with disabilities, and $250,000 for the graduate pipeline program at the Graduate Center. So those are some of the changes that took place in the adopted condition for the senior colleges. The biggest takeaway, though, at the senior colleges, as part of the state adopted budget, however, was none of our mandatory needs were covered in the state adopted budget. The executive budget didn't call for any increases to our mandatory costs, things like fringe benefits and salary increments, energy, building rentals. And the adopted budget did not add any new money for any of those mandatory needs. So that's certainly something that's going to create a challenge on our senior colleges for next year, and something that will work closely with our colleges in trying to make sure that we cover in the most prudent way possible. On the community colleges side, on the next page, we did receive a base aid increase to the community colleges. And the state aid formula called for an increase of $100 per student full-time equivalent. That will bring next year's level up to $2,597. Still short where we were in 2009, when we were at a high of 2,675, but it is the fourth straight year we have had a base aid increase. And we're certainly very grateful to the legislature for their help in making sure that our community college students continue to receive investments, and that'll generate about $8 million annually for the community colleges next year. Again, just like for the senior colleges, all of the items that were targeted for reduction in the executive budget were restored, and all of them received increases as well. So the ASAP program was fully restored and received an additional $800,000 for a total of 2.5 million. Our community college childcare centers reduction was fully restored and received a $400,000 increase. College discovery program, similar, fully restored and received an additional $241,000. $1 million for the community school grants that the governor proposed in his executive budget made it into the final budget. And $750,000 is added for one-stop job centers at the community colleges. So the community colleges overall in the state budget are looking at a $9.2 million increase year to year. It's a little over 4% increase for the community colleges. On financial aid, there were no changes to either maximum TAP awards in the final enacted budget, nor were there any increases in the income levels for TAP eligibility. Those things were both proposed by the Senate and Assembly, but in the final outcome, there were no changes to TAP. There were, however, some financial aid changes that I want to highlight. There was something called TAP ADA that was approved in the adopted budget, and this is something that we're really grateful to see in the final adopted budget. This will amend the requirements for satisfactory progress towards completion for students with disabilities. And this is something that we've been lobbying for many years. I think, as you all know, our students with disabilities face challenges in taking full course loads or course loads similar to peers at the colleges. And so what this will do is amend those satisfactory progress requirements and help more of our students with disabilities be eligible for TAP. So that was a terrific thing. The state adopted budget also included the executive proposal to standardize financial aid award letters. This is something that our university is already doing, and so that made it into the final budget. Some of the other major new initiatives that I want to highlight that begin on page three of your analysis, experiential learning, which I know we've talked about at this committee and at full board meetings, that made it into the final adopted budget. So that's requiring all students at CUNY and SUNY to have an experiential learning experience as part of their graduation requirements. The language was broadened in the final legislation, and so that's something that, again, we'll be working with all of the colleges in trying to make sure that we meet the requirements. I do want to point out to the trustees that by June 1st, 2015, the board does have to pass a resolution stating that they will require the university to implement this requirement. That's something that we'll be bringing to the board shortly before June 1st. And some of the other items that were in there, there was a foster youth initiative for both SUNY and CUNY that was in there. The Get on Your Feet loan forgiveness program that the governor proposed made it into the final adopted budget. That's a good thing. And some of the items that were not included included the Dream Act, which got a lot of media coverage. That was not in there. The proposal to consolidate CUNY and SUNY back office operations was not in the final budget. The proposal to limit SCD, State Education Department authority for new program approvals was not in the final budget. And the Uniform Sexual Violence Prevention Program was not in the final budget agreement. One thing we'd like to point out, however, is that although the budget is done, the state legislature will reconvene beginning on April 21st. It'll come back into session. They'll be in session for about two months till about mid-June, and a lot of these items, whether it's the Dream Act, whether it's the Sexual Violence Prevention Program, whether it's the Rational Tuition Policy, a lot of these items are going to be discussed as part of the higher ed initiatives and as part of the discussion that's going to take place in the remaining legislative session. So that is the summary of the adopted budget, and happy to take any questions or hear any concerns.
Just two. We can also revisit with the legislature the mandatory costs?
Well, that one for the current, for the year, the fiscal year that's coming up, fiscal 16, the budget is completed. However, as part of the maintenance of effort provision that's tied to the Rational Tuition Policy, I think that we can have discussions with the legislature about how to amend the maintenance of efforts so that going forward in the out-years that mandatory costs can be covered through that provision.
And the directive about experiential learning, is that an unusual entry into curriculum from the governor's office?
I think, yeah, if you look throughout the country at what's happening, I think there are, there are some changes that are being made in other states regarding curriculum that's being put forth at the state level, whether it's at the executive level or the legislative level. In terms of experiential learning, we haven't seen a lot of that throughout the country. And I think that most folks would feel that students having an experiential learning is a good thing for students. The issue that we're going to have to tackle with our colleges is how to roll that out and how to make sure that we can expand it to all degree-seeking students. So that's the challenge that we're facing. It takes effect for academic year 16, 17, so we have a little time to do so, and we'll certainly work with the folks in Albany and state government to make sure that we're, whatever plans we develop, meet the requirements that they're looking for.
It is unique from my perspective, and I think the state government has taken a broad-brush approach to this. I mean, it's one thing if you're a Baruch student in accounting, how easy is it to get an internship or in finance or in marketing. But if you're at Brooklyn College and you're a history major, what experiment, you know, what are we talking about, classroom training? Because it's not necessarily the easiest thing. So this is going to be very difficult for us, and I think the Chancellery to determine how this experience will work between now and when we have to make a decision by June 1st. I think our response needs to be equally as broad in this approach.
Mr. Chairman, so initially, we're required to, you are required to adopt a resolution that would set forth the planning. And so I think the first task is probably a relatively simple one, and then it gets immediately more complex on developing the plans. But the new language does include a provision that was not included in the original proposal that calls on us to study the feasibility of doing this, both fiscally and operationally as a matter of the curriculum. So we'll certainly investigate that fully.
I just have, seven years on the board, I've never been told by statute that I have to do something, that the board has to do something. I find it interesting that we're supposed to discharge our fiduciary obligations without knowing how it's going to be funded, without knowing how it's going to work, without inquiring as to the effectiveness of it or anything. So I guess I'll put this in the form of a question. Have I missed something, or is this the first time we've been ordered to do something? As part of the higher ed agreement in 2011, the board was required to do a few things, and they're mostly tied to reports that the board required the university to submit. We had to submit a report on remediation. We had to submit a report on community college chargebacks, and we had to submit a report on the tuition assistance program. So those are the things that I recall in the recent past where state legislation did call for the board to take some action. Those were all, again, reports that needed to be submitted, not anything tied to the curriculum, but in answer to your question, those are the things that I recall that the board were required to do. Well, A-plus for being a loyal trooper, but those are absolutely distinguishable from what this says. This says the board shall not issue a report. This is, they were telling me and every other trustee how to vote on something. And I guess my question is, or why? That was a question.
So we're being asked to vote on instructing the Chancellery to come up with a, the Chancellery as well as the Council of Presidents, the immediate thing, so are we being told to tell them to put together a?
One correction, Mr. Chairman. We're being told to pass, to pass a resolution, not just vote on it, pass it.
And you can see it on page three of the analysis. It says that it requires the CUNY and SUNY Board of Trustees to each pass a resolution by June 1st in favor of developing a plan to offer approved experiential life-learning activities to students.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There's a huge difference between the original language, which said every student must have, every graduating student, degree-seeking is the word, student must have an opportunity, and the new language. And I think what the trustees are going to have to do is get their arms around what are the practical implications of that difference. Because if we're going to scale up unique learning opportunities for a quarter of a million students, that is going to get to be a very expensive process very quickly.
Yeah, and just to. One thing would be helpful for us, I think, would be if someone could send us the language that actually appears in the budget.
Yeah.
I appreciate the summary.
Yep. We'll send that out, and.
Is this the exact language or a summary?
This is a summary, but just to Professor Montal's point, if I can just, yeah, I'm sorry, just to read the sentence. It says, "These activities include those related to students' programs of study, service learning activities completed as part of a course, internships, faculty-supervised undergraduate projects, and activities leading to publication, and production of performance of creative works." But we'll certainly get the actual language out to all of the trustees so you can see that and have a chance to read it.
It is materially different, as Terry suggests, than the original language, and I think it gives us and you the latitude to deliberate over the feasibility of offering.
Well, if the summary is accurate, Chancellor, then I'd suggest that our flexibility is somewhat truncated. Each of the boards shall pass a, shall in favor of, I mean, it's, I'm just, I'm not going to, you know, I don't want to argue about it. I just want to point out that under my reading of the New York education law, we're sort of charged with that responsibility. And it's okay, they can make, pass any law they want. I'm just wondering, what happens if in our deliberations we actually apply thought process to this and conclude things like 60% of our students have jobs, that any burden or barrier to graduation is inherently difficult for the demographic of our student body, the student body's demographic? And we judge that it is not in the best interest of either the institution or the students. When they put non-permissive mandatory language that says, "We shall," I'm just kind of curious, what happens if we say, "Thank you very much, we considered it," and we just choose not to do this? I'm not saying that's where we're going to go. I'm just kind of curious how we're supposed to discharge our responsibilities.
Okay.
I'm sure our trustees will be guided by their own views, and this is in all other matters.
Well, but if there's a law that we're required to abide by, we need some help from you.
Yeah.
And this is brand-new, and maybe you've already thought about it, but we should also be talking ultimately about how we enlist the help, the cooperation, and guidance from various colleges that will be affected by this. Are we going to ask for their input, connection with the plan? Are we going to compose a plan and impose it on our various colleges?
I can assure you that the plan will be developed in consultation with, from today, when we first met, the presidents of the colleges who will be required to.
I would surely hope so, because if we vote in favor of this plan, this is our plan, as I read this, so we need to have some ownership of our.
Just to pass a resolution to develop.
It's to develop a plan, where no plan is.
It's going to be the CUNY Board of Trustees' plan to implement experiential learning.
Only after we approve. We'll have to come back. We're going to instruct the university, both the Chancellery as well as the presidents, to come forward with a plan in the future, at which point we'll then approve that.
Or not.
Or not.
Right.
Or not.
I assume the faculty will have some input?
It calls for it in the language, the University Faculty Senate be consulted. But I think the key thing here to the point that.
In the language of the budget?
Yes, and to the points that.
And the Student Senate.
Great, thank you.
And to the points that trustees Schwartz and Pantaleo were raising, we have to talk about the feasibility of the plan. And the Chancellor said we have both a fiscal and fiduciary responsibility. So I think it's crucial that, at this first step, we're simply saying, yes, we're going to examine the feasibility. But feasibility is the key point, whether or not we'll have the funds to do this, whether or not we'll be in a position academically to ensure that whatever we're incorporating as part of a degree program is educationally sound. Let's not forget, we're going to get assessed by middle states as, you know, at the next stage. So I think you're right to have concerns.
Thank you.
And there's also federal tax concerns as well, because you can no longer have unpaid interns in this country. You have to pay them something. So it's going to, there's going to be a cost to wherever that experience is going to be achieved, if it's outside the university setting in the private sector.
Or be integral to a curriculum, which means there's modification of the curriculum.
Mm-hmm. Correct. What committee is this going to go before? Before it goes to the board?
I think academic.
The academic committee.
It is an academic plan.
Where's it at?
No worries, it's all yours.
I have a question.
Yes.
Am I reading this correctly? And I heard your report, you said, and wrote, well, you said that the mandatory cost, we could take it up again when we look at the rational tuition policy, which suggests that mandatory cost would therefore be a part of our reason for increasing tuition?
No, but the rational tuition policy that was enacted in 2011 called for a maintenance of effort, and it specifically stated that the state had to provide the same level of funding in any one year to the senior colleges as it did the prior year, which means we had to get at least the same level of funding. However, the specific language didn't call for an increase to the budget for mandatory needs. It said basically to the state, you have to give them the same number they had last year. I think the spirit of the agreement, though, was that the state would cover mandatory needs, even though that wasn't in the legislation, and that tuition wouldn't have to be used to cover those mandatory needs. So I think going forward, as discussions take place in the legislative session about rational tuition, that's something that will be discussed as part of the maintenance of effort provision. Does the maintenance of effort provision need to be tightened up to include mandatory cost increases as well?
I just want to make it clear that we are not suggesting that while, that the full burden of the mandatory cost should then be put over on.
No, no. Right, exactly. Totally proposing the opposite.
Okay.
Thank you. That's a good point.
And then one other, as I read this bullet, it says, "Per FT student base aid is increased by $100, should generate an additional $8.3 million. Enrollment reduction offset this amount by 2.2." What enrollment reduction were you referring to?
Well, the community college base aid is based on, it is based on enrollment, but it's based on a one-year lag. And our community college enrollment was basically flat, but the state was carrying a higher level in its financial plan for next year. And so it's just bringing the plan back down to the actuals. It wasn't a real enrollment reduction.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Okay, there being none, there are no more items for the Fiscal Affairs Committee. We'll now move to the Subcommittee on Investments. Lynn and company, come on up as we begin this. First item of business is approval of the minutes of our meeting on February 2nd.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a couple of different action items that were sent to us a week and a half ago. Item 1B is two resolutions requesting that the trustees of the university authorize the release of restrictions on various funds at Brooklyn College and Lehman College. It was included in the package that was sent to us via email as Schedule A, and it's also an annex to the materials we have here in front of us. Further authorizes those funds to be used for the purposes as indicated upon prior notice to the New York State Attorney General as and if required by the New York Prudent Management of Investment Funds Act. The General Counsel is authorized to sign any documents necessary in connection with the authorization granted hereby. An earlier version of Section A with a spreadsheet was approved by the board on May 5th, 2014. The Office of Attorney General requested certain changes to that version. The annex Schedule A has been approved by the Office of the Attorney General. I will move the approval of both of these resolutions, inaction item 1B, and then ask for a second, and then have a discussion from our investment advisors. I've moved it.
Second.
Second. Any questions regarding the restrictions, the release of restrictions for both Brooklyn and Lehman College? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Calendar item 1C contains two resolutions. This is as a result of our last Subcommittee meeting on investments. It's a, for the first part of the, there are two resolutions within item 1C. The first one is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees approve an amendment to our investment policy, which we adopted in June of 2013, revising the asset allocation as follows. The target asset allocation for U.S. equity is changed from 26% to 21%, with a range between 15% and 30%. The target asset allocation for global equity is changed from 21% to 18%, with the range being from 10% to 25%. The target asset allocation for emerging market equity is changed from 10% to 8%, having a range between 5% and 12%. And the target asset allocation for hedge funds is changed upward from 13% to 18%, with a range between 10% and 25%. And the target allocation for fixed income is decreased from 15% to 10%, with a range of. with a range of 5 to 15%. The real asset target is unchanged, and the range therefore is also unchanged. A new 10% target for private equity has been added, with a range from 0% to 15%. The second resolution is a resolution stating that the trustees have determined that accordance with our spending policy, that it is prudent and appropriate to maintain an appropriation of 4.5% for the funds in the portfolio for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2016. I'll move the approval of both of these resolutions included in action item 1C. I'll look for a second and then have a discussion.
Second.
Seconded. Would you like to discuss?
Gene, do you have anything to say? Okay, then we'll go right into the spending deliberations. I know in the past, we, we've been ordered by the New York Attorney General's Office to be compliant with the New York State Prudent Management of Institutional Funds Act, so there are certain parts of the deliberation process that are kind of mandated. And if you turn to page two of the spending deliberation presentation, just provides an overview of what's involved in a NIMFA compliant spending deliberation. First, NIMFA mandates that spending decisions be made on a buy fund basis. And if that cannot be done, if it's too onerous, then one can put the funds within similarly purpose categories, and deliberate on those based upon the eight prudence factors, which are also mandated when one is deliberating on the spending rate. Page three just describes the four similarly purpose fund categories that we use. And these really cover the bulk of our spending. It's clearly about 90, a little bit in excess of 90% of our spending falls within academic support, institutional support, scholarships and fellowships, and instruction. And essentially, for academic support, these represent professional, technical and educational programs. The institutional support represents work-study for those students that don't qualify for the federal program. Scholarships and fellowships, and instruction is fellowships for faculty. Please keep in mind that the majority of the funds in the pool are long-term donor-designated funds. And while there are endowed and non-endowed accounts in the pool, the policy stipulates that both endowed and non-endowed fall under the same spending rate. There is an exception process for special situations, but only for non-endowed accounts. If you turn to page four, it shows the eight prudence factors to be taken into consideration. As you can see on the right-hand side, most of these factors are universal and will affect all funds and all fund categories. So number one, the, as we discussed, the funds in the pool have a long-term duration. Number two, the purposes of the endowment funds, we just discussed. Number three, our outlook is for low to moderate growth, and all of the funds will be affected similarly in terms of general economic conditions. With regard to inflation and deflation, it should be noted that we have a provision in the pool that, where we have built-in hedges in the event that we would have inflation or deflation. These should be somewhat mitigated by the hedges that we do have in place. Number five, we believe that expected returns on a total return basis in the future will be less than we have seen historically. And also to note is that the pool is in a net withdrawal situation, meaning that we have more withdrawals than we do contributions to the pool. Number six, other resources of the institution, as you all know, are tax levy funds earmarked for specific expenses. And so number seven, there really are no alternatives to the expenditure for the endowment fund in the event of a crisis, as the tax levy funds are not permitted to be diverted to the endowment. Number eight, the CUNY investment policy, you'll see that our proposed rate is in line with the investment policy. It is in line with the liquidity that is needed for the withdrawals that we anticipate. And we allow for a smoothing mechanism in the spending calculation to assure sustainability. So taking all of this into consideration, we recommend that we maintain the 4.5% spending rate. And we feel that this proposal balances a number of factors. First of all, the 4.5% recommended rate is greater than the actual spending and has been for many years. Last year, our spending was 2.9% on an actual basis. And so the spending rate really, and this has been true for the last five to seven years. It also ensures the sustainability that, you know, given that the spending is affected by economic conditions, that we expect lower returns in the future, and that we're in a net withdrawal situation. It's also in keeping with the trend of our peers to lower the spending rate so as to not have a risk of depleting the pool. And also, a 4.5% rate as opposed to raising it could be reversed a lot easier. So we recommend 4.5% spending rate.
Any questions?
I just, when you mentioned we're in a net withdrawal period, meaning contributions are down? Or, I understand that revenues, I mean, return on investment, but I didn't realize we were at a period of declining contributions.
Right, I would say that since the formation of the foundations at the colleges, their choice is to put their money into the foundation. And so there are, you know, contributions from some that are mandated by an original donor document, as well as some of the smaller schools that choose to invest everything with the pool, because they really need the resources that we offer.
So this goes back to the conversation we've had over the years about who should, or, well, not say should, but who must invest with this versus who can have their own independent foundations. It's more of that conversation than, are we seeing more funds being kept outside of the system than in the past?
There's more resistance from the larger colleges. The smaller ones are, we're seeing more invested. But the amounts certainly, I mean, the pool could be larger in terms of dollars if the larger universities would co-invest with the pool.
I would say, over the last few years, it's been static in terms of the colleges that have come into the pool versus the ones that are chosen to stay out of the pool. I think it's been unchanged in terms of the number of colleges that are either in or out. Some of them have, some of their funds in and some out, and some are completely in and some completely out. But I would say, over the last couple of years, that's been, that's been static in terms of changes to the, to that structure.
But to be clear, I'm following your question on, the only way we could have, putting aside who's in and who's out, with respect to the pool itself, if we're in a net withdrawal, and we're only spending at 2.9%, does that mean we're earning at less than 2.9%?
No, 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 it doesn't reflect that at all. It's simply that our participants, on a net basis, withdraw more than they contribute. That's all. It has nothing to do with the return.
This is just cash flow basis, it's not, it's not including returns on the pool.
So they're withdrawing more than they're contributing at that period of time. However, they're not withdrawing any more than they're earning.
I think, I think we've got two different.
Yeah.
We've got two different things going on, that's the purpose and the earning.
Right.
Right. And can we va, let's say validate, do we look at the return that we have in this fund versus the returns of the funds that choose not to come into this fund? And are their returns equal to or greater than the universities?
The research that we've done is a little bit dated, but in general, I could say that the returns are generally less. But it's hard to say that in a definitive sense, because we really don't have access to the underlying numbers. And we don't know if their calculations are, they're using a calculation similar to ours. So we did a survey, just very briefly, several years ago. We looked at all of the university, or all of the colleges at CUNY. What we found are, for the most part, the larger schools are invested with investment banks in high net worth products, and they're paying exorbitant fees. We also learned that if they didn't do that, we could probably save about $15 million a year if they co-invested. However, as you know, the foundations have been formed, it's a political situation. They have people on their board that raise funds, and they in turn want to invest those funds and be involved in the process. I should also say that we, in the Budget and Finance Office, have looked at various ways of addressing this. But it would mean changing the form that the pool is in, for example. It might, because they, they want to be involved, I mean, I've seen at Penn State, for example, where they had an advisory council, which was comprised of a much larger number, but they didn't have voting privileges. But to have a large body that has voting privileges would be very difficult. So there are, there are so many things that are moving parts to this.
So this seems like a deja vu moment for me. But I think it is at least our responsibility, while we can't mandate participation. I find it just incredulous that someone could raise money under the name of the university, and we can't get reports about the individual funds. That's just beyond, and at least, as a board, we should be in the position to say, you know, Fund X is earning Y, and Fund Z is earning this, and it's just information. We wouldn't mandate any action. But for us, this many years later, to be sitting here and say that we don't even know, because we don't have access to the information, my deja vu moment is not feeling real good right now.
Trustee Beal, I agree with everything that you've said, and I'm uncomfortable with the situation. It's not that they're raising funds in the name of the university, they're raising funds for the specific college. And those alumni who started those foundations.
I understand all of that, but the last time I, last time I checked, that City College is not, an independent entity, not part of the City University of New York. I mean, they are part of the City University of New York. I know, we've had this conversation.
I agree.
But all I'm just saying, I think we need to look at disclosure.
Right, we've been, we've been advised that the foundation for City College, as an example, is not an instrument of the university.
It would be helpful to me, Mr. Chairman, if I could understand, and if we can't do it at this meeting and another meeting, what standing do we have as a trustee of CUNY to either control these foundations, direct what these foundations do, set standards for these foundations? I understand the politics, I understand the politics. It's my money, it's not your money, I understand the politics. But on the other hand, we have an obligation, in the name of CUNY, to be sure that, one, that things are being done correctly. Two, if we can demonstrate, and this would be a great selling point if we could demonstrate it, that our return is so dramatically better than what you're able to do, and so much cheaper for you, and so much less burdensome for you, that you should allow us to invest your money. Have we ever had this kind of report about where we get off saying these things? I happen to agree with you, Trustee Beal, but I don't know what our standing is to make these comments and to give this kind of direction.
I believe we can have standards, in fact, I think we do have some. We have, we have prepared a manual some years ago that provides standards that each of these foundations must adhere to, in part driven by the, I don't know what it's called, the New York State Non-Profit Law, or something like that. I've read it, and the General Counsel and I have discussed other additions to it related to our expectations and yours. And frankly, I'm not sure why, as a supporting organization, those foundations don't report to their own colleges, which in turn could report to us. So I have to join you in not understanding why that would not be available.
I'd be happy at this point just to have a report. I'm too far and along in the game of discussion about mandating or controlling or any of that, but it just seems incredulous that we can't get a report on a sheet of paper that says, "This foundation's return was this, and this one was that."
Well, if we could expand the report to also talk about who appoints members of that board, of that separate corporation? How are they appointed? Does the university have anybody on that board? And I just would like to have a better understanding. I don't think the answer is no, they're alumni associations that are separate, essentially. I agree with you, I'd love to have that report, because if anything happens to any one of them, the people around this table are going to be held responsible, whether we have the authority or not.
Oh, I agree with you about that, too.
Maybe we should use the word "shall" the way the folks in all.
Mr. Chairman, I, so I've been here 10 months, and this is the second time I've been involved in a discussion on some of these issues. I think it would be useful for us to sort of bracket this and have a report to this committee, a sort of a primer on the operation, the laws governing these institutions, and what standards there are in place, and see what your comfort level is with that.
That would make a lot of sense to do, because, I mean, you know, as the chairman said, if something happened at one of those foundations, I mean, the press is going to blame us. They're not going to understand all of those details. And it just seems that we ought to at least know what's going on, and that be able to comment. We can't have rogue foundations using our name, and we don't know what's going on.
Well, that's actually the key, I think this answer to this is rather simple, as opposed to getting all complicated, and that is, they are using that name under some sufferance or right that's been granted. We control the name CUNY, we control the name City College. I don't understand, if we wanted to do this simply, why we just couldn't say, "As a condition of continued licensing of the use of CUNY, the use of City College, the use of anything, these are the standards you must meet." And you put it in the form of a licensing agreement, or they can't use the name. So I think we should try to look for a simple way to do this, and that might actually be the simplest way. I'd like to know how they got to use the name, and they were given permission. I don't know if they were given it to them in perpetuity.
That should be part of this report to us, and to the extent we can. Tell us how much money we're talking about. How much is out there?
And what the delta would be if they followed our investment approach.
If the total dollars, if everybody co-invested in one pool, would be close to a billion.
So it would be an additional $700 million on top of what we have?
Easily.
That was, yeah. Right, they're three times the size of what we have.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, it's been seconded.
That we get the information?
Let's do the first motion, then we'll do the second one.
Oh, there's already one?
There's already a motion on the table.
Oh.
Two motions on the table.
Two motions are on the table.
We have clarified the motion, this chairman will move it.
So the first motion was, we were changing the asset allocation, as I talked about. The second one is a 4.5% withdrawal policy. The both of that, those are calendar item 1C, they've been moved and seconded. Any further questions?
Just one, I must have missed this in here. What happens to cash in the asset allocation you described?
Well, we certainly hire managers for certain, various specific purposes.
Is the cash shrinking, the amount of cash, you have shrinking?
They're to remain fully invested. We do have cash sometimes when we anticipate a large withdrawal, or we're in the process of fundings or redemptions.
I think last time we were here, Chairman Schmidt commented about how much cash we have, and why do we have so much cash, and shouldn't we be investing it? What's the number? Is it a percentage of this total portfolio?
So we're supposed to go into executive session to have a conversation about exactly that?
Okay, sorry.
So if we could.
I apologize. I apologize.
No problem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Uh, do we need a motion asking for...
Yes.
I'd like to move that we get a report on, uh, clarification of the status, uh, as presented by, uh, Vice Chair Panatello, as to, uh, the status of the independent fund, not independent funds, of the college fund, foundation funds, and other information that would enable the trustees to make informed decisions.
I'd like the second one.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, there being no further business, we're now going into executive session. I will tell everyone that following executive session, uh, there will be no votes in executive session, it's purely a discussion. So we will, uh, this will end this meeting and our meeting for today, once we're done with executive session. Okay?
Thank you.
And while we're...